Good evening. My name is Vince Knobblin, President of Speedway Town Council. It's 7:00 PM. Today is August the 8th. I want to bring this call this meeting to order. First on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd just like to mention, anybody in the audience, please silence your phones. We're moving forward here. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. These minutes have all been distributed to council. There's no changes or corrections. A move that they're approved as submitted. Hearing none, they're moved. So Grant, next item is yours, appointment following the vacancy of Speedway Police Commission?
So I believe after discussions with the council, we're going to give this one a little more discussion and try to solicit some additional applications or resumes.
Yeah, we've had resumes.
Yep. A little more time to review them and discuss it. So we'll, we'll put this off until either at the end of the month or the first meeting in great gracious September.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the update from Hotel Equities on the Willshaw Hotel. Grant, you want to?
Yeah, so we have a little bit of a unique situation this evening. Joining us via Zoom is Nick Montag with Hotel Equities. He is one of their finance professionals, has been working on the Willshaw Hotel deal for, since last October, November. So we invited him this evening to give a quick update on the status of that project. So Brian, if we want to go ahead and bring Nick up and I'll turn the time over to him. Good evening, Nick.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes. So we'll go ahead and turn. Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
No, I was just going to say thanks, everybody, for having me and nice to be with you guys this evening. The town had wanted us to come on and kind of give you an update of what we've been doing for the past several months. So, so we've prepared a couple of slides that we can walk through. I'll try to keep it, keep it somewhat short, but we have been very active since the end of last year. And I know when you drive by the site, you might not think that. We had cleaned up the site, done some, put some signage up on that, but we've been very busy with what's called pre-development work. And, and our group has invested significant capital along the way and, and resources from our team to get to where we're at right now. So I thought I'd kind of walk through some of the items that we've been busy working on and then cover, you know, what we see moving forward, what the next steps moving forward for this project. So if you can see the slide that's up there, a lot of the work that we've been doing to date is what's called pre-development work. This project is a little unique in that there's already an existing structure at the property. This is called a stalled or a broken construction deal. And then there was also a couple of different parties prior to us getting involved in the deal that had been working on this. And so a lot of the work that we've been doing is sort of putting those pieces back together. A lot has happened, not only at this site, but just across the country and, and really globally over the last couple of years for this project. So what we've done in the property as it relates to pre-development work is we've been doing basically updating, changing and correcting a lot of the plans and design work for the property. As we get a little further into these slides, I'll show you the exterior of the property as it currently looks. And, and really, we don't see a lot of changes to the exterior of the building. We're largely keeping that intact. I think a lot of the work that we've been doing is more how the interiors of the project relate, and so we've been making updates to that. We've made some changes and we've also made some corrections to that. We've got an architect that's involved in this that's working on the interiors to make sure that it's aligned with Hilton, who's, who's the, the brand of, of the tapestry flag. And, and so what happens, especially in stalled deals like this, is that the brands will change their design standards as they move forward and it's up to the developer to stay on top of that. We've also made a couple of changes. We, we dropped the room count down by one. We've made some corrections as, as you go through the project, just things that we noticed that were a little out of place. And then we've also tried to do some value engineering. So costs, especially on materials, have gone up over the last two or three years. So we've tried to value engineer some, some aspects of the property on the interiors while obviously staying within, you know, Hilton's designs, which are pretty specific. So we're trying to stay within Hilton's design standards for the property. Another big piece of work that we did, that we have to do moving forward, which is, which is a construction study. These are normally done on, on construction projects, ones that are not stalled out like this, just starting from a ground up. They're all the more important on a project such as this one that has work that was started and then stopped. And what that construction study does really is, is test and analyzes all of the existing construction that's done on the site and make sure that it's viable moving forward. Has there been damage, corrosion? There are obviously seasons that we have to deal with out here. And, and so a lot of that study had to do with basically the shape of the property. And then also you've got a construction study that that's where your construction costs are as well. And, and that was a lengthy process that we completed about a month ago. I'm pleased to say it did come back mostly positive. There are a couple of areas that we're going to have to address and fix the property, but by and large, the structure at the site has, has held intact and that was really good news for us moving forward. As it relates to completing and finishing this architectural work and interior designs, I'm, I'm pleased to say that we are at what's called 99% approval. So we're, we're all right there on the final stage of getting this fully approved on the entire interior designs with, with Hilton. So that's a, that's a big step for us and it took, it took a long time to get to this point. And really what that means is allows us to start looking for the next step. When you have those drawings completed, then you get to bring those back to the general contractor, you get to bring those back to all of your various subs, and you get to update all your pricing on the project for the remaining items that we need for the site to be completed. And so that's, that's the work that we've been doing the last several months. And I think, you know, to reiterate the investment we've put in this, our group has about $5 million invested into this project to date as, as part of this work and some of the outstanding costs that we're, we're sitting at the site. So we are heavily invested in this and believe in this project. It's, it's taking a little bit longer than we thought, but we are, we are certainly excited about this and are continuing to move it forward. So if we can go ahead to the next slide. So, so moving forward, the next steps for us really is, is, is completing these interior design drawings, as I mentioned, and just getting the project repriced. As, as we sort of look back at this, and certainly I was there last year with you guys and, and sort of our initial interest in the project, and, and that hasn't changed. We are, we are still very optimistic about this project, but we have had some challenges. I don't think anybody could have foreseen yet another sort of economic hit that, that came at us. And we continue to be challenged by some staffing and just material pricing for the project. Those seem to be kind of going up and down every month as we, as we've worked on this. So we've been trying to navigate through some of these challenges and it has taken us longer than we had wanted. But I, I do think, you know, going back to our investment in the property, that this reflects our commitment to the property. The immediate goals for us as we move forward is, is taking the repriced portion of this project when our, all of the design work is complete and securing financing. This is the big piece of basically getting your, your financing secured, is making sure that your costs are all intact. It is good news that we have that construction study completed, all of the different lenders that are looking at this project. That's one of the main third-party reports they're going to be looking at, which is what is the current shape of the construction of the property? And we are done with that. It took us a while. And as I said, that came back mostly favorable. So we're, we're excited about that point of this. So the next steps, complete, update the drawings, we're going to reprice the project. Once we were, once we reprice the project and have the financing come in, at that point, that's when we're going to be mobilizing construction. And so I think with that, we can, we can maybe look at the last two slides. I, I think most of you have probably seen these, but again, a lot of, a lot of the work that we're doing is not changing the exterior of the building. A lot of the work has just been updating and working on the interior design of the property, which is sort of the first part of this. And then, and then you go right into closing on the financing. And once, once those two events happen, that's when we're envisioning starting construction on the project. But I think with that, let me pass it back over to Todd or to Vince with the town.
Well, thank you, Nick. I just thought I'd ask maybe a couple of questions in terms of, I think everybody in town realizes the impact of inflation. And can you, you know, tell us specifically, you know, how inflation has affected your construction cost in looking at that?
Yeah. So, so when I was mentioning value engineering, I mean, that's, that's always important work to do to value engineer projects, but that has been a lot more important on this project, more so than, than any other project that I think I've worked on in recent memory. And obviously inflation has taken a huge part of that. So, so we are dealing with that. Some of the good news is that a lot of the steel costs, for instance, and some of the existing work, we're past that stage, so we're not being dealt with, with inflation. But we, we have just been battling that every week and trying to make sure we've got the right fixtures that go into the property. Some of the common area plans that were originally designed, we, we basically engineered those to cost less. And, and when I say cost less, I want to make sure that it's, that it's out there, that Hilton does have to approve all this. It still falls within their design guidelines. The other good news that we got, working on a tapestry now versus when the tapestry first started, is that I think whenever, you know, it's Hilton, Marriott, whoever your brand is, when they come out with, with these flags like tapestry, which is, which is still relatively new, but was certainly back in, you know, 2017, 2018, when this was initially planned, the, the interiors and a lot of the costs that went along with building a tapestry proved to be very expensive on some of the existing tapestries across the country. So one of the, the good things, and this has been helping us fight inflation, is just that Hilton has been on board with that and, and, and we have, you know, we've, we've basically been able to, to value engineer and, and maybe not do, you know, the, the marble where we could put cords, we, some of the chandeliers and some of the other aspects in the common area, in particular, we've been able to, to cut some costs and shave down. So it's definitely a concern. It's something we've been grappling with, but it's, it's something that everybody else has been having to deal with too. And so I think a big part of that is just, again, trying to keep your costs down so that you can, you can still have a feasible property. And at this point, it still is feasible, so.
Any questions for Nick? I think I got one other question for you, Nick, is just from the construction contracts that Wilhelm was updating with all of his subs and everything. Is that now completed or do you have a date of when that will be completed?
I believe that contract, so that contract's still in place from the previous developer, but that will basically, at, at the time when we close financing, that's when that contract goes, goes into place. And as it relates to some of the subs and, and some of the, you know, the other groups that were working on this, when I mentioned how much we've invested in this property, a lot of that went towards the general contractor and, and basically paid off a lot of outstanding payables the property had. So you can, you can kind of guess how those individuals, when we paid them in full, it went a long way. So we're trying to keep that whole team as much as possible intact. And again, going back to the actual contract, I think that, that becomes effectuated when we close with the financing.
Okay. Any other questions for Nick or thoughts, comments? Grant?
I think the only thing, I think I speak on behalf of everyone, we've been appreciative of their efforts. They came in after the project was, was defunct, began meeting with us, have really dove into this project, invested significant money and, and gotten us to this point. So it's, it's one of those things, we appreciate their efforts and are glad to have them considering this project because we think this is a key, key project for our downtown and the Speedway and really want to see this happen. So thank you, Nick, and everyone there at Hotel Equities.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you guys all for having me and we'll see you next time.
Well, you. Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is the Chocolate Walk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, I am not. I am not Lisa Bentley, I'm Lori Lamb. I got the privilege, because Lisa is six, so I get the privilege of speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Chocolate Walk, the Tanya Isaac Foundation. All right, just a little bit about our organization. Lisa Bentley is our treasurer, Darla Berry is our secretary, I'm a director, and Brad Bainbridge is also a director, and Jerry Pagash is the vice president, and Michelle Leidy is the president. The Tanya Isaac Foundation, Inc. was established in 2016 in honor of Tanya Isaac that passed away of cancer. And we discovered that there was a limited amount of resources for people in our community that had cancer. And they were going through some things and they, some people really were struggling financially. So that's how the Tanya Isaac Foundation evolved. Since that time, the foundation has helped several families here, right here in Speedway with childcare, utilities, transportation, prescription medication, mortgage payments, totaling over $4,000. So that's pretty amazing that we've been able to help that many people. The time has come though to do some fundraising to help our, our cause. And we wanted to create some excitement for our town while bringing awareness to the foundation. So we came up with the Chocolate Walk for Speedway. It will be held September 10th from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. We like to kind of call it a pub crawl with chocolate. So, and so it's for all ages. The tickets are $20 and limited to 200 for the first year. And we've already sold 30% of our tickets, so that's pretty awesome. The ticket holders will arrive at McGilvery's parking lot beginning at 2:00 PM to receive a numbered punch card, a map, and a bag, we have a nice pretty pink bag, to collect all their goodies. And then the map will guide the ticket holders to 28 participating Speedway restaurants, businesses and churches. We would like to thank our sponsors and businesses for their support because it's amazing. Everybody, when we asked them, yes, yes, we'll do it, that sounds cool. So that was really awesome. After the event, the ticket holders will be asked to vote online for their favorite chocolate. The fan favorite chocolate will be awarded a chocolate bar trophy to display in their business. The tickets can be purchased online at speedwaychocolatewalk eventbrite.com or look for the event page on Facebook. So we also have it on Facebook. And if you're unable to attend the Chocolate Walk, you can also donate to the foundation on the Eventbrite ticket site. Any questions?
Oh, great. I'm glad you already got 30% of your.
I know, it's awesome, isn't it?
Solid, you know, from that. What kind of reception from all the businesses?
They were like, wow, this sounds really amazing. And so, you know, we've kind of told them that they can do whatever, they don't, if they choose to do a Hershey kiss, they can just have a Hershey kiss sitting, sitting out. If they choose to do something really fancy, they can do something really fancy. So, and that represents their building, you know, their business or whatever it is that they are promoting.
Lori, you may have said it, and I apologize, maybe didn't hear all the other things you went through. How, how much per ticket?
20, $20 per ticket.
Thank you.
Is that a real chocolate bar on the trophy?
It is, no.
Looks real. Really does.
It's no Leg Land, but it's amazing. And this will be a traveling trophy. Each year it'll go to the next year's winner, and so it'll be making its way around town for many years to come.
Any other questions? Well, I thank you for bringing it to the town and I, I hope that the response continues and we get a lot of people out there.
We hope to see all of you out there getting your chocolate in.
Yeah, dark chocolate is like.
Yeah.
Judy's driver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is event, special event request.
Can we come back to this item, please? We had technical difficulties. So she's Lauren from USAC has went to get her laptop. She has a presentation.
Sure, I wonder what happened there.
Thank you.
Okay, next item would be the approval of a bid for a community crossing grant. Grant?
Yes, I will take this item. So I was going to do it very slowly, but I see she came in in the back, so I will do it normal speed.
No, that's all right.
So the, the town did advertise for and received two bids for our annual street maintenance program overlay of various streets in the community. Brian, if we could bring that map up, I'll, I'll talk about that here in just a moment. We opened the bids on July 27th. We did receive two bids, as I mentioned, DC Construction Services Incorporated and Grady Brothers Incorporated. We have worked with DC Construction in the past, they were our low bidder last year. Their bid was in the amount of $884,772.41. That was $144,929 and change lower than the second bid. Although I will say this bid was about 50,000 higher than our engineers estimate. When we received the bid, we discussed it. This is a community crossings matching grant funded. Now, they will not pay us for the additional overage, but 50% of those funds are coming through the community crossings. We looked at our budget situation. We believe this 50,000 is reasonable with the cost increases that have gone on recently. We've heard as high as 30 to 35%. This is well within that range, if not a, a bit under. So we would recommend approval of this bid and award of the, of the contract to DC Construction Services. I know Bob reviewed the contract, I think it's fairly standard language. Do you have any concerns, Bob, with that contract?
No, I recommend it's adoption.
So we're recommending the council adopt that and then Vince, you will be signing the award notice to proceed award letter as well as the contract itself, which are included in your, in your packet. Brian, that picture, I wanted to bring that back up, sorry, I didn't get around, around to it. This is a map identifying where this roadwork is to take place. So I, I've got the, the list of the roads are here, I'll just cover a couple of them so that everyone gets an understanding of where those are. Beaufort Road from School Drive to Moller is one. So Moller Road is on the, the right side of this map, 26th Street over to Lynn Hurst. That's kind of the area that is shown. So that's one of the roads that are being done. Hickory Wood Court from Hickory Wood Drive to the Dead End. Hickory Wood Drive from High School Road to Parkwood Drive. Hickory Wood Drive from MacArthur Drive to Whitcomb Avenue. MacArthur Lane from Beaufort Road to Hickory Wood Lane. There's a couple of more, sorry, bear with me. Maplewood Drive from Meadowwood to Moller. Maplewood Drive from Moller to Meadowwood Drive East. So those were, were the roads that were included in this year's maintenance program. I, I was asked by a resident a couple of months ago why we do work like this all in the same area. The reality of doing work like this in a concentrated areas, we do improve our bid, the bid prices that we do receive, the contractor can do the work in the same area, maintain control and traffic, and typically we'll get a, get a better price for that. These roads were included on our upgraded kind of condition summary report, as were the roads last year. These were roads that needed to be done and there are other roads that we will identify next year that will be bid out. And those are identified and reviewed by our Streets Commissioner, Rob, Rob Whatnight, who's not here this evening. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have, but we think this is a responsible bid that we would like to accept.
Okay, I think I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we accept the bid from DC Construction Services as described by our town manager this evening.
I second.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second. Is there any questions for Grant concerning this bid?
Grant, was it DC that did the work last year?
Yes, it was, yes.
About the year before, do you recall?
I do not, I, I wish Rob was here. I do not know who did it the year before.
Okay.
And I believe DC, that was their first year in our town doing work last year.
Right.
I don't know, Jacob, can you remember who it was?
I'm thinking it might have been Grady the year before.
It might have been, it might have been.
I will say the work that DC did last year, there were a couple of residents, because the work was done in my, my area, and they had some concerns and they were very, very good at getting back to the residents and following up on those requests, so.
I think that, I, I agree with that. I've heard the same thing from residents in that area. The, the one thing that is always a challenge with this type of project is the work gets done midsummer. They plant grass seed. Of course, there's no water.
It doesn't grow as well as it should.
Doesn't grow, and then you end up with whatever else is in the soil, which is weeds and occasionally a cornstalk and.
Yeah.
All kinds of things coming from the topsoil. So I'm not sure if there's a way to, to delay that grassy being planted.
Until later in the fall.
And I realize, same thing, they're trying to get to it all at once, right?
Yeah.
Sure would be helpful.
Yeah. So I will, I would, I do want to point out that this work, while we're approving the bid now, will not start until next spring. It, it's just the environment right now is not great. It's hard to get asphalt, concrete, other things. It, it's going to have to be in the spring. So my guess is this would start sometime in April or May of next year, take two months worth of work. And then Gary, to your point, maybe we can talk to them about doing the seed in late September, early, early October. This contractor also did the sidewalk work through the Transportation Commission and they actually came back and reapplied seed when it didn't grow. So I've noticed some areas still haven't grown, so we're gonna, we're gonna try to rectify that.
What, Grant, what if the cost goes down between now and then?
Um, I, that's a great question. Typically you would have a, a contract deduction. There would be a change order. My guess, David, is that's probably not going to happen, but it, it could.
I'm hoping it does.
It could, yeah. We actually had that on the Tenton Castle Street. We had a couple of items that were cheaper than they were when it was bid.
My thinking is if this goes till spring, there's that possibility.
Yeah. Typically the way these bids are, are done is you do a quantity amount. So you say asphalt, so many tons, and when those prices come in lower, they check the tickets. And that's in essence what, what you end up paying.
So we have agreed to this amount. What if the price goes up?
Uh.
Is that on them because we've agreed to this amount?
I, I would believe that would be on them, yes.
Yes, it's a fixed cost. They don't have, they don't have an escalator for the asphalt prices increasing.
Yeah. Unless we add additional content or, or material. We might say we want to do the street or add here.
I just want to clarify to the public that this is not a strip project like 30th Street and a lot of streets within Indianapolis where you're going in and out of chuck holes and that we're, we're going to mill down and replace the asphalt.
Yep.
Okay, yes.
We are going to mill down?
Yes.
But we're also doing more than that. I mean, I'm looking at.
We're doing curb and.
Full sidewalk replacement.
Gutter and sidewalks and ramps.
Excuse me.
When you do the community crossings grant program, you have to do a little more than, you can't just do street maintenance, you have to do the other elements as well.
So what comes into play here is making sure the residents get ample advance notice.
Got notified, yeah.
Because you're going to lose access to your driveway for.
For a couple of days or.
Three or four days till you get new concrete poured and it sets and.
Yep. I, I do believe last year they, we had some hiccups at the start, but I think by the end of the project, they were very, they had gotten those things down and were better at communicating, not only with us, but with residents, being flexible, trying to help people in and out, that kind of thing. I know we got a lot of compliments about, oh, they, they did that part the next day so I could get in and out of my drive because of a mother that was, you know, whatever was going on.
Good to hear. I got a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All of those in favor, in favor of approving the bid for Community Crossing Grant 2022 Asphalt Project signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, back to special event request. You want to come forward, Lauren? Thanks for coming tonight.
My pleasure. Is he going to be on? Yeah, just ask Brian to show the slides. Brian, can you show the slides?
Behind us.
Oh.
You just have to cue.
Brian, can you show the slides?
Very good.
Last year when we approached this idea to the council, we, we mentioned that we would like to do this annually. So this would be our second annual event for the Oktoberfest on Main Street. This one would be, we would be hosting it, USAC Racing would be hosting it. be hosting it, but we would be, it would be in conjunction with the SRO World Challenge Eight Hour Race. Our finale for the Porsche Series is going to be running at a different track this year. However, we still want to have the event. We want to be part of the community, and I believe Kevin had discussions with you a couple of years ago and mentioned that we would be doing something every year. So this would be it. How do you go to the next slide? I'm sorry, do I just ask him?
Just cueing down.
Perfect. A little bit about SRO. They're on four continents. They race all over the world. I do have a slide. They have a lot more of the exotic cars, but I'm sure you guys are pretty familiar possibly with them. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so this year for entertainment, this would be held on October 7th, I apologize. But last year, we had Clayton Anderson playing on the streets. We had a beer garden. But this year, we want to go with a little bit of something different. So we have three different bands in mind: Living Proof, Wild Heart Band, and the United States Air Force Band. So a little bit about them. One of the local Speedway residents, he owns Speed Town Comfort Air, knows a lot of the racers, is always in Speedway. His son is actually in the Air Force. And when I was talking to him about this event, he mentioned that his son is in a band for the Air Force. And they do events for free, promoting the military and showing everyone that they do goodwill. So they're actually really interested in coming down and doing this event and coming to Speedway and promoting, you know, what they do and working with IMS. So just as a good tie-in with the good that they do. Plus, it's a Speedway, you know, resident. It's a really good tie-in. I'm really hoping that it falls through. I found out a little bit later. I think they require like 90 days, you know, because of the chain of command. But as backup, I do have Wild Heart Band and Living Proof, which I heard from Dawson's were pretty popular. So those are two options going there. You can go to the next slide. Same as last year, this is a map of last year, but we've changed it up a little bit with the date. I already contacted Jason already for security, Aldo for the emergency services. Probably go with the same portable restrooms, food, local restaurants. I want to get with barbecue and bourbon. Last year, they provided brats. I'm not sure how well they enjoyed that or how successful they were, so I want to touch base with her to see if that's something that she would want to do. But the beer garden, I already have Dawson's on board to do that. In regards to trash, I had volunteers, but the volunteer at the end turned out to be me. So if, and so if anyone has, maybe like some high school kids that would be interested in maybe volunteering, or I'd be willing to pay to help for their assistance, that'd be wonderful. So, next slide. Just some pictures from last year. It was a great event. It was a lot of fun, given the fact that we may have canceled due to the weather. It was really kind of questionable, but we went ahead and went through with it. You can go to the next tent. You can see we had Yokohama, the Porsche cars on display. I'm not sure if SRO will have cars in that particular lot. That's a lot right next to our building, but they are planning on doing the parade through Main Street, just as they did last year. You can go to the next slide. Just a couple more shots of where the beer garden is on the right, and then the stage on the left. Go to the next one. Next. And those are some of the cars as they were parked. Those are the SRO cars parked on display. You can see that we have the teams there as well as their drivers. So it was really kind of cool for the visitors to interact with all of the drivers and the teams, especially with such exotic cars on display. You can go to the next slide. Next. 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 Thank you. Next. Next. So this is our tentative schedule. So at 2:00, this is what we did last year. We closed down the streets to give us ample time to put up the beer garden, mostly for the fencing, as well as the beer garden truck. So from 2:00 to 5:00, the vendors will set up. At 5:30, the SRO cars were escorted into Main Street via police escort. Let's see, 6:00 to 10:00 is when the Oktoberfest street party began, and the band would start playing at 6:00 as well. 7:00, SRO speaking time on stage. I don't know if USAC will have anyone speaking at this. And then at 8:00, the SRO cars would be escorted back to IMS. And let's see, at 8:15, we honored the PSC champions. I'm not sure if SRO will have their champions at that time, but at 10:00 is when the band ends, and then the street party officially ends. So we'll have the street cleared up by 11:00.
Question for you, just how many cars are you thinking about for SRO?
I think we had about 40 cars, probably about 25. It could be less. I mean, I aimed high for our last one that we just did last week, and I think we only had five, so.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we move forward with a special event request for the 2022 Oktoberfest presented by USAC Racing.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. So any other questions for Lauren? So are you going to be hopefully not the only person cleaning after 7:00?
Well, I hope not. I had volunteers, paid volunteers, but they just kind of disappeared at the end of the event, so probably past our bedtime.
We probably have some folks we can connect you with.
That'd be amazing, because I ended up spilling beer on my head, so.
Oh, no.
Yeah, but that's okay. It was a fun time.
Yeah, definitely was. And especially in the weather, you know, it was a little chilly and, you know, but there was a lot of people out there that took advantage of it. And others, neat to have the drivers there. And, you know, basically, they're popping the hoods on the equipment, and then they drove them out.
Yeah, I had a video that I was hoping that would have shown, but I think we had trouble kind of transmitting that. But I had caught the parade of cars going out, and it was just a really, really cool thing to see and be so close to them as they left, so.
It's pretty impressive.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for me?
Yeah.
Nope. Okay.
I'll wait for David. Thank you. There's no other questions or discussion? Do you have anything to say?
No.
Okay.
The full-time job.
Full-time work, yeah.
Sorry.
I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the special event request for the Oktober presenting a USAC racing by Lauren signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Lauren. Next on the agenda is the approval of claims.
Claims presented to you represent those made from July 9th through August 5th, and happy to take any questions or would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the claims as presented by our clerk treasurer this evening.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second on the claims. There's no other discussion. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor approving the claims as submitted by our town clerk treasurer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Utility adjustments.
Utility adjustments are the same period, July 9th through August 5th. Just have a couple due to late fee adjustments from our processor misapplying a couple of payments. And so we're refunding those, and appreciate your approval on those as well.
President, I make a motion that we approve the utility adjustments as explained by our clerk treasurer.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion concerning utility adjustments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All is in favor of approving the utility adjustments as submitted by our town clerk treasurer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Jacob. Next is a report from our department supervisor. First up, Chief Chuck Upchurch.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Just a quick recap of the Brickyard 200 from a couple of weeks ago. Our department, along with our public safety departments, completed that racing weekend. Just so you know, we had no major incidents that weekend. I believe our department made one arrest, though, for the whole weekend. So, and just a quick update, the 10 vehicles that we ordered in 2021, we did receive five of those last week, and we got word that we have three more that came in. We're going to pick those up tomorrow. So that leaves us with two from that order that we're still waiting on. So, and the additional 10 that we ordered for next year, we're still waiting word on those to see when those are going to be delivered. So today, we began our new applicant process to fill our three open patrol officer vacancies. We're doing two separate, we're doing a lateral entry process, and we're doing an open process for candidates that don't have police experience. So we're hoping to fill those. As you know, we had two, and then with the retirement of Robbie Harris, that made three vacancies again. So, and just a quick update, when comparing our reported crimes from July 21, as comparing them through the year where we are in July, completing July of 2022, our homicide rate, there was zero change. We had one in 2021. We've had one in 2022. Our sexual assaults, we are down 100%. Our robberies are down 57%. Our assaults are down 5%. Our burglaries are up just slightly at 6%. Our vehicle thefts are down 51%, and at this point, our thefts are up 37%. So, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Chuck? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Next is our communications director, Cheryl McQuillan.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking Lauren from USAC for presenting tonight, and then this will be the third event that she and I have worked together, and she's been great to work with. She gets the information to me when I need it. She shoulders a lot of it during setup, planning, and all of that. So thanks, Lauren. Let's see. Just a couple of updates on things I'm working on. The new town website that we approved the vendor for last meeting, it's actually moving along pretty quickly. We will have the same address, and that was questioned last time, so it will continue to be SpeedwayIN.gov. Currently, I'm going around town and taking pictures of different things so we can have pictures to load in. We don't have a lot of stock of pictures of that nature, so we need some time taking photos. I'm currently reviewing and updating all of the content that's out there. A lot of it is outdated. I've already condensed some of it on the backend of it. So anyway, it'll take about two months, two to three months for it to be totally completed. Anyway, we are moving along with that. State of the Town 2023, I know this is only August, but I'm going to be working on that this month yet, trying to secure a date, location, guest agenda, things of that nature. So more information will be following on that. Just wanted to remind everyone, August heavy trash days are this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then just a run-through of all the events coming up that I have on the calendar. A lot of these are put on or are led by the Speedway Parks and Recs, so Tammy will follow up with more details. But the dates are, the West Indie Music and Arts Festival is August 20th. September 10th is the Tanya Isaac Foundation Chocolate Walk that the group talked about earlier. September 10th, there's also a Relay for Life of Circle City, and that will start off at Leonard Park, whoops, from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning. On September 16th and 17th, there's a two-day community sale put on by the Old Speedway City Neighborhood and Community Group. September 29th is the National Night Out for Speedway, along with the Community Touch a Truck Day. Again, Tammy will have details on that. The October 7th, USAC Oktoberfest that was just approved. October 15th is a tentative event that we're working on. It may be a community fall festival. More details will come with that. October 29th, I believe the date has been determined for the Lions Club Halloween Costume Contest, and the Trunk or Tree will be October 29th. And then Light the Night on Main for Christmas will be December 7th. So that is all I have tonight.
Any questions for sure?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our Economic Development Director, Todd Cook.
Thank you, thank you. It's been an exciting time these past two weeks, drinking out of the fire hose a little bit. Just kind of an overview of some projects that I've been working on. Since my arrival, we talked about the Will Shaw earlier this evening, so I won't rehash that, but I think we're making good progress there. The Boraj, I've worked with getting the alcohol permit transferred. I think we had that permit, that transfer signed a few months ago, but I think it expired. So I've worked with Jennifer to get that executed and sent back to council today. The developer has asked for an extension. They're behind a little bit in the project, so we may, you know, I think it's maybe a four-month extension of time to be open. I think instead of maybe an October timeframe, they're looking at April. So we'll be working on a development agreement modification on that. 1300 block, you know, all of the living units have been sold or, I think Shelby thinks he should have built more, maybe. All of the retail spaces have been leased as well. La Peep, Vine and Table, which is Big Red Liquor's more bougie offering, and I believe Interior Decorator has the third space. So they're very pleased with that project. The Triangle Parking Lot on 16th Street next to the Speedway Gas Station, we're meeting on-site tomorrow with a development consultant to kind of help us put together a budget for that. So I think that'll be coming down the road. Founder Square, a lot of activity there. I've been told that all of those sites are under contract or sold. Meeting with TNH Development tomorrow. They're the developers of the senior housing there that we've had lots of interest in. So I will know more about that, that project, next time we get together. I've really just been, you know, trying to get out and meet with, you know, our major partners. I've met with PRI, Performance Racing Industry, the IMS. Have a meeting coming up Thursday, I believe, with the IMS Museum and Praxair on, I think, early next week, and Kenmar, the Boraj developer. So just trying to keep busy, you know, finding out kind of, you know, hey, what can we do to help? And, you know, I like the public-private partnership, working together. Working together works is something that I heard many years ago and still believe it is valid today. So any questions for me?
Any questions for?
Don't take it easy on him.
Yeah, no. No, I know.
And next time, give him another couple of weeks.
I know Boraj is moving along because they've had the street shut down at Lynn Hurst and 16th and digging holes. And I'm sure, I think it was water-related. 16th and digging holes. And I'm sure, I think it was water-related. At least we had a water truck out there. So, hopefully, they get everything put back together, get that squared away, so we can open Leonardson fully up at that point.
Yeah, I think the delays in the project are related to underground storage tanks that were discovered, and things like that, so.
I think we have a record of underground storage tanks in this town.
Yeah, I will say this. The irony was, they knew they were there, they just hit them, you know, and that's what happened. So, they knew they were there. When they hit them, that kind of causes some issues, so.
Is that what's holding up the, excuse me, the demolition on the old post office in the third building that's been a hair salon and a million other different things? They are keeping them? I thought they were coming down. I just knew they were gutted.
Yeah, they're just cleaning them up.
It's good to know. When I spoke into Brett Benj, he talked about materials being the challenge, so.
Yeah, that's true for everybody. So, they're not really trying to push the opening out too far. It seems reasonable to me.
Any other questions for? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Glad to be here.
Next up is our Fire Chief, Bob Fishburne.
Good evening. Chuck and I just had a riveting time at the Brickyard, and it was very event-free for us also. We actually utilized some on-duty personnel to cut back on some of the overtime. It's not as big an event, so we're able to shift people around and utilize some on-duty apparatus and ask some of the other Marion County departments to utilize those to talk about a few things we're doing in our facilities. We are repurposing some of the shelves that used to be downstairs. We've already repurposed some of those for storage downstairs, the old police department, and we're getting ready to repurpose some other ones to help with some of the storage on some of the files that, so that we don't have to pay to restore those that you and I talked about. So, we're moving some of that shelving up, and I'm having my guys do that while they're on duty, where they can drop things and go, and we'll get that taken care of. The other thing that we're doing, I really want to commend my guys, is we're going to be painting Station 89. They've done some trimming of the trees on duty, and the library's doing some tree work, and pressure washing and things like that is something you can drop and, you know, take runs. And then, myself included and a couple of guys off-duty are going to paint that entire building, the top black. So, really, the only cost we'll have is a little bit of comp time. We're not going to pay them overtime. We're just going to give them some, you know, complimentary time where they can utilize for their families and time off. But it's really going to save us some money, and it's going to dress that building up quite a bit. It'll be black around the top with the new letters red, and we'll just have the expense of some paint, which is, we can buy out of our budget. So, I just want to commend them on some of that. We've been working with Heritage Crystal Clean. We've all been a part of seeing Heritage grow, and we've been continuing to partner with them and asking Marathon to kind of mentor them a little bit in some of their safety practices. So, we're in the process of, we've taken some of our guys through Heritage Crystal Clean. We're helping them come up with scenarios where we can do tabletops with them and be more proactive on how we respond to some of those events, and that's really been going well. Our entire department has been through Marathon and been updated with some of their butane dispensary things, and we just completed the application for a grant that we can apply for through Marathon. We haven't heard back yet. We're hoping to use some of that funding as we develop some type of, you know, there's all kinds of active shooter stuff going on. I know Chuck and I both have guys on a Marion County Task Force for dual response because they mitigate the safety, then our guys have to go in, and we've seen being unprepared is just no place to be. You end up on the news, and so we're trying to be proactive with that. We would use some of that grant money for that specific, you know, some of that equipment that'll be involved in that. Lastly, I want to ask all of you to just keep all of the guys and gals working with Task Force, one being our own Battalion Chief Chaney. He's now been in Kentucky for almost two weeks, helping with search and rescue and recovery. They actually have had a break for a day and a half, thought they were going to get to come home. FEMA held them there because they're expecting more weather. Been in communication with Mike. He said, you know, news doesn't give it the scope that you see when you're down there working. So, with that, I just would answer any questions and ask you guys if you have anything else for me.
No slides tonight, or?
Never.
I didn't trouble. Thank you.
Okay, next up is our Parking and Recreation's Tammy Smith. Thank you.
Hello. First of all, Speedway Bicycle Club meets almost every Tuesday, and they are meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM in front of Big Woods. It's, they're going on a leisurely ride throughout the town, and it is a family-friendly event, and you do not need to be a member of the bicycle club to participate. There seems to be a misconception of that. Some people thought they had to be a member, and you do not. Everyone's welcome. And again, it's just going to be a slow, leisurely ride. Schools started back up, so relieve some stress, I guess, from having schools starting back up. Speedway Youth Basketball Flyers will be sent to the schools within the next couple of weeks. This program is for boys and girls in grades three through six. The season will begin the week after fall break. Registrations will be open probably within the next couple of weeks and close in mid-September. The Flyers will have the full details on them. Also, once we send the Flyers out to the schools, information will be posted on the Speedway Parks Facebook page as well. We have had five concerts so far, four left to go. This is our biggest concert season with nine concerts. Last week was a bit stressful watching the weather, but we got really lucky. We decided to live on the wild side and go for it, and it worked out for us. So, it was a good evening, and turned out to be a really comfortable one. This Thursday, we've got the Silver Birds playing 7:00 to 9:00 PM at Meadowwood Park. On the 18th, the Party Band, the 25th, Barbender, and the last day, September 1st, is the Last Alpaca. So, come out and join us for the concerts on Thursdays. We want to thank our sponsors again for those concerts. Speedway Lions Club, Wesler Engineering, Fun Days Ice Cream, Alliance Insurance Company, Daredevil Brewing, the Miller Family, and Philip Faust with White Curt Realtors. So, we thank them for being so generous with their donations for us to be able to offer these concert season. We also have market in Meadowwood. It seems to be getting more and more successful each week. We have produce vendors the last couple of weeks, and that's been a big hit. The market is every Thursday, 5:00 to 8:00, through September 15th. It's been kind of funny. We had sweet corn, tomatoes, peppers, zucchini. This week, we're going to have cucumbers and green beans as well, and they are run by 5:00 o'clock. There's like a line of people wanting the produce, so that's nice to have. We also have other vendors selling plants, honey, baked goods, candy, handcrafted items, jewelry, and then we have eggs once or twice a month. So, come out if you haven't already and see our market. As Cheryl mentioned, the West Indie Art and Music Festival is coming up August 20th. We currently have seven bands playing on the hour from 1:00 to 8:00 PM. Each band will play for 45 minutes. We will also have art and craft vendors. We still have some openings. If anybody's interested in being an art and craft vendor, they can email me at tsmith@speedwayin.gov. In addition to the live music and the vendors, we're going to have food trucks. We've got one food truck, Later Taters, and they were just voted Best Food Truck by the Fox 59 viewers. And then we have another food truck, AP Delicious Ribs. We'll also have Fun Days Ice Cream and a Beer and Wine Garden, and that will be brought to us by Books and Brew out of Brownsburg. So, we're looking forward to that event. And other events coming up, September 29th, the Public Safety and Community Day. More details will follow on that. Trunk or Tree, we are actually partnering with the Lions Club to combine the costume contest that they have every year. They will do that, and then immediately following will be the Trunk or Tree. We're still trying to finalize all those details, but we know it will be October 29th. Light the Night on Main, details to follow on that. And the only other thing I kind of wanted to bring up is a not-so-fun thing. We continue to see a lot of violations of our park rules and ordinances, and we've kind of cracked down the last few weeks especially, inciting these people who are renting the shelters and then blatantly violating the rules. Last week, I sent out reminder emails to those who rented the shelters as a further reminder of our park rules and telling them that they will get cited if they violate, and they still violated. We had a violation Saturday and Sunday. Both of them trashed our shelters, left trash everywhere, left grills. So, I just kind of wanted to go over some of those rules. Our residents who live around the parks, they are very familiar with our rules, and so I hear from them often when they see these violations. And when we get a report on it, we are acting on it. So, I'm just, you know, putting that out there. We have, our parks are unique in the sense that we have homes right around those parks. So, we want to keep that peaceful for the neighborhood. We don't allow bounce houses or inflatables. A lot of that's for liability reasons, but some of it's just for, to keep our parks nice. Those things are heavy. They create problems on the grounds. It smashes the grass. It takes weeks for it to come out of it, if it doesn't kill it. Vehicles driving on the, through the parks, we got video from one of our parks personnel of a vehicle driving fairly rapidly right next to the playgrounds, right through the grass next to the playgrounds from one end to the other of the park. And just loud music at night. There's groups that stay there at night. They're not supposed to be there after dark, and yet they're playing music, and that's disrupting our neighbors as well. So, I just want to put that out there to please be mindful, follow our rules. It is for the safety of our neighbors, our visitors, to keep our parks in good order and looking nice, and just be respectful. So, with that, that's all I have. Any questions?
I just want to thank you for parking the cars during the race and, you know, taking advantage of that and allowing, you know, other clubs and things to do that. So, thank you for all your hard work on that.
Yeah, yes, and thank you especially to Speedway Redevelopment for allowing parks to be able to park on those lots because we are still trying to earn money for our grant match, and that's what that money goes for. So, I was given the opportunity of more than one lot, so was able to reach out to a community group that was able to help, and so that's been very beneficial for us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Public Works, Ronnie. Ronnie Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll start with the Water Works. Last month, the groundwater plant produced 39 million. Last month, the surface water plant produced 41 million. We'll be finishing up reading meters tomorrow. The Street Department was cleaning sewers, sweeping streets. Wastewater has sent 98 million to Eagle Creek, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Ronnie tonight? Well, hearing them, thank you very much. Appreciate the hard work you guys do.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our Town Manager's Report.
I just have a couple of quicker items. Budget work sessions start next week, Wednesday and Thursday with the council. I think both of those nights are at 5:30, so looking forward to that. I know Jacob and I have put a lot of time into the budgets, as have department heads, and I met with our financial advisor today and have a good direction of where we're headed. Staff has also been busily working, putting together a strategic plan to outline those items that we feel are important to address and work towards in the various departments. Hope to have something wrapped up by the end of September, bring it to the council in October for your review, and then potentially adopt it as our operating strategic plan by the end of the year. So, those are the items that I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Grant? Hearing them, I'll move on to a report from the councilors. Councilor Eileen Fisher.
I was just going to talk about the budget meetings this week, but just to really add to what Grant had said is the fact that they are open to the public, so you can come and see what that process looks like and know what we sit here and have to review.
Making sausage, right?
Thank you, Eileen. Next, Gary, Councilor Gary Pedego.
I just want to ask everybody to be considerate and aware of the fact that schools are open or are about to open in some cases. Kids are out, and it scares me every time I drive Cunningham or Lynnhurst, especially when school lets out and the kids are on the street and people are doing 10, 15 miles an hour over the speed limit, ignoring the school zone limits. And I hate to see somebody get hurt, so please be aware. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor David Linting.
I was going to bring up the school zones as well, as a reminder, school started this past week. Last Friday, I attended the State Fair Band Day at the State Fairgrounds and saw a wonderful, terrific program put on by the high school band and their brand-new uniforms. They finished 19th. I think there was some miscalculation. I got them finishing much higher, but that's what the judge said. It was a great, great day. I helped get them, the band loaded, and I was at the high school at 5:30 in the morning, so it was a long day. But they are to be commended for the effort they put in all summer. If you went past the high school any day or evening since school let out, they were out, out working and practicing. So, really, really, a really, really great show, and just, it's a shame it's got to end, but that's the end of the season for them. So, with that, we're going on to fall sports at the high school, and just ask that you can attend those events and support our students, and remember, school has started again, and obey the speed limit signs for school. That's all I've got.
Great, thank you. Next up, Vice President, Gary Riggs.
Just a couple of things. In addition to the fact that schools started, I want to thank our employees. The dog days of summer, it's been difficult on many of them, and it doesn't go without notice. It counts a lot. I think the folks in town, water appears magically, the water disappears magically, police and fires show up, other town employees doing work in the parks and here at administrative offices, and I'm sure I've missed something in just thinking about it this way. But we have a great staff, and it's very much appreciated as well as our leadership. One of those I missed would be Jacob's department here in the administration building as well. But with that, I just thank our staff for what they do.
Okay, thank you. As far as the President's Report, I attended an event last Tuesday put on by USAC. It was the BC 39 event, and I thought it brought something very important to light. Brian Clausen was the driver that lost his life, and his parents and sister were there and talked about, you know, being organ donors, and I really brought that to light. I think that, you know, the one positive thing brought about by his death was the awareness by the racing community to be an organ donor. And if those individuals out there, I think you ought to seriously consider it next time you renew your license, and because you can have an impact on a lot of individuals, given a bad circumstance, and do good things from that standpoint. But I appreciate that event, just to bring that to light to a lot of people in our town, and it's another good event that takes place in Speedway from that standpoint. Other than that, I'd just say- Other than that, I'd just say, you know, it's been hot these last couple of weeks, and definitely put a lot of stress on everybody working outside from our street departments, our waste, and all of our departments out there working in the heat, officers and firemen, police and fire out there working in the heat, trying to do their job, and just support them in as much of a way as possible, especially in work zones, and just be alert and careful out there when they're taking care of. I also want to bring up a few things that I've been contacted from the general public in relationship to Airbnbs and VRBOs and rental properties. It's on quite a few people's minds, and, you know, we're a town that with larger events taking place in the town of Speedway, there's a big demand for that rental property so that visitors can come. But I think we're going to take a closer look at what surrounding communities are doing for that, and I think it's, I think from a best practices standpoint, we'll be able to let the residents know, you know, what to expect, what they can do if they see something out there taking place in their neighborhood. Please let the police know about it, and so that they can come in and help out. I'm talking about loud music, larger number of people, people parking on the street the wrong way, anything going wrong with, you know your neighborhoods more than anybody, and I think it's just important that we definitely, when those events happen and go wrong, that we make sure that police are called and reports are made from that standpoint. That's all I have. There's nothing else to report. It is 8:12, and this meeting to be adjourned.